To the August 23 Troy City Council Meeting. This evening, Councilwoman Robin Beltrameini is going to provide us with an invocation, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
In the mid 1980s, Mother Teresa of Calcutta gave an address to an eclectic group of physicists and mystics at the Oberoi Towers Hotel in Bombay. That address is probably the source of her most famous quote where she said, "We can do no great things, only small things with great love." We all wrestle, particularly during these times, with the impotence of the individual. Mother Teresa did not waste time fretting or wrestling. She simply moved along changing the world, one small act at a time. It is that example, each person doing what he or she can do in the moment to make a positive difference in the world. With reflection, let us pray. Heavenly Father, Yahweh, Allah, by whatever name you are called, we humbly ask, as we deliberate tonight, enable each of us to use these moments to make a positive difference in the city of Troy. Help us to keep our vision wide, our steps small, determined, and sure, and our attitude one of kindness and consideration. We seek to seize the opportunity to recognize and demonstrate that leadership and servitude are and must be complementary dispositions in all sustainable discussions and decisions. We proceed grateful for your presence and assured of your guidance. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilwoman Beltrameini. Mrs. Bartholomew, may we have the roll call?
Mayor Schilling.
Here.
Councilwoman Beltrameini.
Here.
Fleming.
Here.
Howellak.
Here.
Irwin.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Slater.
Here.
Forum President. Belltrameini?
Mayor Protem Fleming is out of the county and has asked to be excused. Therefore, I would move to excuse the Mayor Protem at this time from this session and the study session.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltrameini, seconded by Councilwoman Slater, that we excuse the absence of Mayor Protem Fleming for being out of the county. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Mayor Schilling.
No.
Councilwoman Beltrameini?
Yes.
Howellak?
Yes.
Irwin?
No.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Motion passes. This evening, we have the pleasure of having with us Frank Baxter from Environmental Systems Research Institute, and he is going to present a special achievement in GIS to the Information Technology Department. It is the environmental, it's the ESRI Award. So if we could have the Technology Department and Mr. Baxter come forward. Now, in addition to having our head of our department here, we also have some people here from the department and some future
Very much so.
...technology specialists who I'm sure are going to be showing up, all of us, by the time they get to that position. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Frank Baxter. I'm from ESRI, or Esri. I'm out of Minneapolis, Minnesota. I'm glad to be here tonight. I'm the Regional Director for our company, for the upper Midwest, and I'm here to present what we refer to as a special achievement in GIS award. This award is very meaningful to us as a company, and there's very few who win it from year to year. Troy has won it because it has shown exemplary use of the technology in supporting the citizens in the city of Troy in implementation and making a better place to live. With that, the special achievement award in GIS. Turn this over to Gert and Alex, and they can tell you why.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. We're really honored to accept this award and really excited because it is a part of the IT department that we're very, very proud of. First of all, I wanted to have other people in the IT department that are here stand up at the back. We've got a few. I want to introduce a couple specifically because they really were the brunt in the brains behind developing what we have today. First of all, Alex, right next to me here, he's our GIS Administrator. His hard work and dedication over the past 10 years has really pushed us to a place that I think a lot of other communities are envious of, and he deserves a lion's share of the credit for this award. Next is Tara Russell-Weir, standing here, the red on, and she's a GIS Analyst who is actually in the Engineering Department, but we consider her an extension of the IT Department because she works very closely with Alex to gather and maintain a huge amount of data that goes into GIS, as well as contributing some database development. And then last but not least, Rob Bitner, with his two future programmers with him at the back there. He's our programmer analyst who, through his programming and database skills, has really helped Alex to implement a variety of applications for the city. I'd also like to acknowledge ESRI is really a great company to work with. They continually improve their product and allowed us to implement new things without actually buying more software. They keep introducing new features in our existing software, so it's really a great value for our maintenance dollars that we pay every year. And lastly, I'd like to thank city management and city council for the continued support of GIS in particular and technology in general for the IT Department. So now, if you can bear with us for about 10 minutes, Alex is going to do a little overview of what we've actually done with GIS for the city, so you can see how the various departments actually use it. Turn it over to Alex.
GIS technology is a technology used to store information, analyze, and model our environment. Its uses are most commonly associated with creating of maps, both paper and digital, typically web-based. GIS is also used throughout the private and public sectors, around the county, the region, the state, and around the world. Our GIS efforts really formally got underway in late 2000, and our key responsibilities were identified to us. We were really to collect and maintain information about the city's infrastructure, facilities, and land base. We wanted to support city operations, seek out duplication of effort and efficiencies, and streamline workflows with the tools given to us by our GIS software, and eventually to make that data available to the city's staff and to the public. Currently, we have well over 200 data layers that we maintain and utilize in our daily activities throughout the city. Probably the largest data set is that supports our public infrastructure. That's our water sewer and storm system, our road networks. Those would be our fire hydrants and the water pipes and everything that we have mapped throughout the city. But also, our planning department utilizes GIS as well as our engineering, police and fire, parks and rec, and of course, our land base, which would be our tax parcels, our addresses. These are all managed in our geographical information system. As the technology evolved, so did our role at the city beyond just data creation and into really deploying and management of applications. As more and more applications had GIS technologies enabled in them, we would support these applications that we do today. There's also approximately 14 publicly accessible applications that utilize GIS technology that's available on our website, as well as there's just the hundreds of custom map requests that we receive every year from the public end to support our internal departments. Over the recent years, the city of Troy has been recognized by our peers and national vendors for innovation and success in implementing GIS across our city departments. While many other local municipalities in our area have invested in implementing GIS technologies, it has been our approach, I believe that has set us apart. The typical model for cities to implement GIS is to concentrate their resources on outfitting a few staff members with traditional GIS software, and it is up to those staff members to provide GIS services to the rest of the city departments. It has been our success, though, to invest in rapidly developing technology of the Internet, to bring those GIS tools and data sets to the broadest audience possible instead of in the hands of just a few. The city's cornerstone to its enterprise GIS efforts is its main web-based GIS application seen here, accessible to all city staff through the city's computer network. This application is much more than a mapping application, but serves as a central portal to access and interface data from many of the city's enterprise computer systems, tying together information in GIS data into a hybrid application. It is our intent to provide the city's staff with a one-stop-shop application to access many of the enterprise computing systems within the framework of a GIS environment, the byproduct of which is cost savings in terms of money saved in licensing and in terms of man hours saved in reduction in training due to the fact that we can deploy a simplified, consistent interface into many of our computer applications that the city maintains. As we see here, this is a screenshot from our internal GIS application, and it's the result of what a city staff member would see if they did an address search. And it accesses actually no less than seven separate computer systems that are maintained by the city in a single location, so they could get to this by just clicking on the map. So instead of going to the seven separate systems, they get it right in front of them. One important thing to note about this is that not all of our computer systems are available to every single city employee and every single department. It costs money to provide the licensing to access most of our systems, as well as many of these systems are very difficult to navigate and take great deals of training to really flush out the information they need. But now with our GIS, all of our city staff have the ability to access data sources that were once difficult to obtain, if not not accessible to them just a few years ago. This allows for better informed decisions by all of our city departments, as well as it lowers our cost to deploy IT solutions to our departments. One key area that we focused our efforts on over the last 10 years is the maintenance and access to the city's infrastructure data sets. Within the city's GIS, city staff can access work order history, past inspection data, or scan documents just within a click of a button. All this information is being fed by different systems, processes, or departments, but the end product is absolutely seamless to our end users. The Engineering Department has been a longtime utilizer of our GIS technology, and they manage great deals of information, managing information about the thousands of survey points, for example, or modeling pavement conditions in their hundreds of lane miles of roads that we have within the city of Troy to better plan their capital improvement projects. As the sophistication of web-based software has increased, so has our ability to provide robust applications to better leverage our existing staff. One such example is our ability to deploy highly customized tools and applications to departments to edit their own GIS data. In the past, editing data required very complicated software, often much too difficult for their departments to operate unassisted. But we have now been able to deploy highly customized applications that allow city staff members to update their own data sets, the result of which is we've been able to grow our GIS operations throughout our city, but leverage existing staff and existing resources. The Police and Fire Department are very heavy consumers of the city's GIS data, from their use of our GIS data sets within their in-vehicle mapping systems, to the use of sophisticated chemical plume detection and modeling software that is completely GIS data-driven. And as of late, we are even working with the Police Department to deploy tools to analyze recent and historical criminal incident trends to more effectively deploy resources out in the field. The Planning Department not only utilizes GIS capabilities to manage and create official planning documents, but they've been utilizing GIS in very cutting-edge ways as of late, rendering what-if scenarios, utilizing GIS for design charrettes to support advanced planning and visioning sessions. This is very exciting to us, and we hope to see more uses of this as the technology evolves in the near future. And of course, many of these data layers are accessible to the public. Access to many of these layers, such as the zoning boundaries, the tax parcels, bike routes, park locations, are all available on the city's website. By providing public access to many of these GIS data sets, we are extending the benefits of our GIS efforts to those who live and do business within the city of Troy, to provide 24-hour access to data sets that may help them in a decision perhaps to site a business, to purchase a home, or just locate amenities in our community. And finally, another example of utilizing technology to more efficiently do our work is to recently develop, we've recently developed an application to support our outsourcing efforts. This application allows city staff to log into the city's work order management system. A vendor can then log in to a secured web portal and access the service requests that have been deployed to them. They can receive this information 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. They can get a map, they can print out the information. Once the information has been complete, the vendor can then log back into the system, close out the service request. The city's staff are automatically notified of the status change. No phone calls, no pages, no faxes necessary, very streamlined and very efficient. And finally, we would just like to thank you for supporting us and supporting technology over the years, because it truly does allow us to do our, makes our job go much more efficient. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Council, do you have any questions for Alex after his presentation? Councilwoman Beltrameini?
Alex, those 20 applications or so that are open to the public, how does one access those?
That's available through the city's website, and you look for a maps marker on the city's front page, and through that you could access the data layers through the maps page, as well as there are a few applications that aren't outwardly obvious, and those would be like the service request application that our vendors are using. That's a password-protected application.
Sure, needs to be. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Congratulations on the award to the Information Technology Department. I know that your work is very important in coordinating for all the departments within the city and for all the people that try to access information, so that's why it's been an important part of what we wanted to do here in the city over the past 10 years. And so we do appreciate the receipt of the award and for the caring staff people from the Technology Department, because many times staff members or council members may call upon them to solve a problem with their computer or with their system, and they seem to do it always in good spirit. So we thank you. There are no carryover items this evening or public hearings, and so we will go right to public comment. And I see that there are a couple of citizens that signed up before our county commissioner signed up, and he has his young son here. So would you indulge me by letting me call on him first before I call on the two, or would you prefer that I call on the two of you? It's Mrs. Zembruski?
He can call first.
Okay.
He's got more voting to listen to.
Because he has his young son with him, I thought that we should make that accommodation. So Commissioner Burns, would you come forward?
I'll take you guys, everyone comes in line, but...
Well, that was my suggestion.
I'm going to be very short tonight. I just wanted to let everyone know of an update with the county, and this is my son, Jack. For a limited time period, Oakland County Health Division is offering anyone who does not have insurance, or anyone who does have insurance, but their insurance does not cover vaccinations, free immunizations this week and next week. The goal is it's back-to-school time, we want to make sure our kids are prepared to deal with any of the flu, or measles, or chicken pox, or anything that might be out there, and so we want to make sure everyone who's going to school is getting the proper immunizations and that they're available to anybody, even if you might not have the resources right now to pay for them on your own. So this week, we're going to have a couple of special clinics, and you can either go to the Southfield office for the Health Department, or you can go to the Pontiac office for the Health Department, and they're going to be open specially for people who are working from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. And that's going to be on Wednesday, the 25th, and then Thursday, the 26th, and then next week, September 1st and September 2nd, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. Both those Health Division offices will be open from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., and we're going to have free flu shots for people who are in need. Let's make sure our kids have the tools and the medical support that they need so they can focus on studying and getting good grades this year. So I want to make sure that everyone knew our Health Department was doing that. If you want more information, where those offices are, what you need to bring with you, or any other information regards to this, thanks, John. You can visit my website, which is TimothyBurns.org, and TimothyBurns.org, and we'll have all that information and links that you can go to to get that information. So, want to say bye-bye?
Thank you. Hi, Jack. Nice to see you.
So anyhow, this was some timely information. We wanted to pop in and make sure everyone knew it was available and it was out there. So have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you. Next, we'll call on Audrey Zembruski.
Good evening. Good evening. I wasn't here at the last meeting, I was sick. But anyway, I read the Troy Times, and Mayor, I just want to know if reporters are quoting or quoting you right or not, but it said here, Mayor Schilling said that if the millage would have passed, it would have been okay for the library. Now, I'm not talking as an advisory board member, I'm talking as a taxpayer. And this was quoted in there saying that if it would have passed, nothing would have been, the library would have been fine. Now, that's not true. We all know that when that millage was passed, it's for lawsuits. We have a lot of lawsuits pending. I know that, and all of you know that. We don't know how much as taxpayers, we only know the one that came out right afterwards when somebody got mad and upset and said, "I want to know how much." And they said, "600, 7,000 cash." That's the first time we ever heard. We never hear how much it costs us as taxpayers that we put out for any lawsuits, how much it costs us for having the lawyers to come in, how much we pay for lawyers outside of the city hall. We never hear about this, how much it really costs us for one lawsuit. We did that one time, but we didn't hear the whole thing. That was just the money that was put out. And I just feel like if somebody's going to say something, I really think the library should still be under the Troy City Library. That's the way I feel, and as a taxpayer, that's the way I feel. And if you're going to have four different people and groups that are going to be putting something out there to get money, that's going to confuse them. We had enough problems at the precincts this last election with people not really realizing how to vote. And when I got done working in a precinct, absentee one, I emailed to the Republican Party, to the Democrat Party, to everybody that ran, and said, "If you people don't get out and start to teach people how to vote," because when it says, "Do not split the ballot," it means do not it means do not split the ballot. And if they get up there and say, "I'm independent," I'm going to say, "You're wrong. You know what? You're either Republican or Democrat." Now, let's face the facts. There is no such thing as independent. You can switch and vote for one person, you can switch and do whatever. Because I just remember as a kid when they used to want to know at a presidential election who was going to make it, and they had us in the 7th grade voting, and they said, "Go home and talk to your parents." Well, I sat there and I said, "Oh, I know what they want to know. They want to know who the president's going to be." So I voted Communist on that piece of paper. I wrote down Communist and checked it off. And man, if that didn't go around the school. Well, I'm not a Communist and I'm not a Socialist, but by God, I'm going to tell you, you're not going to tell me who I vote for or who I'm going to vote for. And I feel like we have to teach people how to vote all over again. They split the ballot. They don't believe that delegates, you turn it over, they voted for all the delegates. That ruined their whole ballot, except for the judges and that. That goes through. And somebody's got to sit down and really come out with some explanations to people on how to vote. And so I tried. I tried to tell them, and I tried to tell them, "Don't bring big signs, don't do any passouts at the polls." And I did email that to a lot of people, the ones that I really cared a lot, I said, "Don't do it. It's not worth it. You put it in the garbage when you walk in anyway. So don't pass it out. It's not worth it. Give a nail file, they can put it in a purse." You know, but don't pass out literature. If people don't know when they hit that door who they're voting for, they shouldn't be voting. That's why I look at it. Thank you.
And next, we'll hear from Marvin Reinhardt.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Good evening.
I'd like to congratulate the Troy Police Department for their Citizen Police Academy. I checked up, and it says it doesn't cost the city nothing. These police are so dedicated that they come in on their free time. Why can't the city people do that? Don't the city people have that much pride to have people, you know, classes come in on their own time like the Police Department does? In fact, the Police Department could lose 40 grand, and it's not even a crime. That's what our Police Department is. And the other question is about Clark Hill. According to Crane's newspaper, and I caught up the guy who wrote it more than once, he hasn't returned none of my calls, but it says Clark Hill represents Birmingham, doesn't represent Troy. Then there's another article saying that that train station might be built on the other side of the tracks. So that means all this time, when we're paying Clark Hill to be a lobbyist for us, he's really representing Birmingham, gets free stuff over there. Are we being sucked dry by Birmingham again? That's serious, okay? Because they know they're never going to get a tunnel underneath that thing, that'd be a billion dollars, because there's a train track under that, there's another train track under that, because years ago, the trains wasn't elevated. They were slowly elevated. So going through that's like going through a brick wall. And that's the thing that I can't understand. I said I got to have a FOIA to find out whether Clark Hill, but I know Clark Hill was involved with that Michigan Mountain Jacks thing, that Scottish thing? That's Clark Hill's 501(c)(3) that's in Troy. So he took tax money out of us and now representing Birmingham. Now, how can we be tricked that bad? We got one of the highest-paid men in the state. That's all I have to say. And then you got to be Scottish to join it, and another racist organization like the San Marino Club, you got to be Italian to join it? I call that racist, okay? Or invite-only clubs like the Rotary and Kiwanis, let's see what their racial makeup is. This city is so far behind in its times, and then you guys going out there and want to float bonds? Who owns these bonds? Not white people no more, non-whites. They look at Troy, and what we got? We got the Balkan American Center over there. Then our Police Department gets extra money to watch those people. That's okay. It's been requested in your paper here that we get money by the United States government to watch that place, because that's the only place I know where the Balkans hang out, which is a term only supposed to be used for land, and not supposed to be used for people anymore. Because if we use it for people, that's a racist word. But Troy is a racist city. So you guys have a good time, and when you respond to me, remember, I'm going to be responding to your response in Crane's and all these other magazines across the United States. So until this city gets itself together as far as being one city, like the Police Department can have all these people organizing, the city can't do nothing. And congratulations, Tom, you finally got Troy days with that Zion church. You guys have a good day.
Next, we'll hear from James Savage. Good evening, Mr. Savage.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members. At the last meeting, Mr. Miller stated that the $2 million park at the Big Beaver Rochester Road intersection was to enhance the entrance to Troy from the I-75 freeway. What I say when I enter Troy from the I-75 is Hooters, Burger King, McDonald's, a chintzy-looking strip mall with more fast food outlets, Mr. Peter, a repulsive-looking tanning salon, Taco Bell, Tim Hortons, and so on and so on, and I'm sure you get the picture. But this mess did not just evolve, it was carefully planned with years of meetings and studies by our Planning Department and Planning Commission and the DDA. A few years ago, we spent $100,000 on a Big Beaver study. What happened? Kmart left, Volkswagen left, the Monarch Complex was proposed and abandoned, the Big Beaver John R. Village was proposed and abandoned, the Pavilion's Complex was abandoned. And how much did the city pay consultants to study that one? Were all the for sale and lease signs part of the study? And most of this happened way before the 2008 financial meltdown. Then there was the future-in-study. $50,000 we paid to one person, the consultant, plus all the staff time. And if I recall, it didn't even mention the need for a transit center or a beautified All these years of wasted time and money, the one thing that the residents had indicated they wanted, and the city would not move on, was a civic center park, just a simple park. For some reason, the Planning Department was determined not to include it in their My reason for bringing this up at this time is that item I-5 on tonight's agenda is to plan a planning meeting. When you hold that meeting, I hope you will consider some of these comments and look at the Troy that we have today. Remember that the Troy of today was the Troy of the future 10 to 20 years ago. So what on earth were these planners thinking? Because it's not there. I would suggest you concentrate less on trying to attract new business in and do what you can to retain what business we have, especially the small retail businesses on Rochester Road between Big Beaver and Waddles. That is Troy's downtown shopping district. And when you make plans, you hope for the best, but prepare for the worst. It's an age-old motto, and it works. I hope you do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Peters is next.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Mayor. I'm a little troubled by this new police law that they have. You know, over the years, I've seen both sides of this department, and I recently, somebody had an anonymous call about my car, and I had to put it in the garage, et cetera. Yet, when I travel around the city, I see other areas where, I don't want to name them, but believe me, they're there. I've seen cars and, you know. So I'm just wondering, you know, about this law. It seems to me like there's already, now I know there's some of these guns, but it just seems like the law itself, it seems to me like it's the spirit of the law, not the letter of the law. And I think sometimes what gets happened here is that sometimes motives and events can somehow sway people's minds at times and get a kind of herd mentality. So what I'm trying to say is, I thought that maybe there would be, there's already laws on the books to deal with some of like cell phones and stuff like that. And I just wonder if we're granting power where power isn't warranted. Thank you. Yeah, stop.
That concludes those that signed up to speak. Did I miss anyone on public comment? Therefore, I'll go to the next item, which is the response or reply to public comment. Council members, did you have anything that you wish staff to clarify? No? Okay. Thank you. Next, we have our regular business. And the first item under regular business that requires action is the designation of voting delegates to the annual meeting of the Michigan Municipal League. And the item is before us with two slots, one for an official voting delegate and one for an alternate. I don't know who is attending. To slot those names in there. Councilwoman Beltrame, do you have?
Maureen and Mary and I are attending, so any of the three of us are capable of doing
Of the three of you, does one of you wish to be the delegate and one to be the alternate?
I would love to be the delegate.
Okay. And Councilwoman Kirwin would too. Who was the delegate last year?
I think Mary was. Because I had a vote.
Oh, okay.
The year before, I think I was the delegate, and last year you were the delegate. Because the year before, I think you led the, you chaired the assembly.
No, I chaired the assembly last year.
Was that?
Yeah.
So we need to have two names inserted, and then we can have a resolution.
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Beltrame?
Resolved, the Troy City Council hereby designates Mary Kirwin as Principal Official Representative, Official Voting Delegate, and hereby designates Maureen McGinnis as Alternate Official Representative, Official Alternate Voting Delegate to cast the vote of the City of Troy at the Annual Business Meeting of the Michigan Municipal League, to be held September 22nd through September 24th, 2010, in Durbin, Michigan.
Do we have a second? I'll second the motion. Discussion of the motion is read. The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Beltrame?
Yes.
Howarlag?
Yes.
Kirwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes. Motion passes. I-5 is a joint meeting with the Planning Commission to discuss economic development initiatives. And in speaking with Mr. Surley, I believe the suggestion was for our October...
Fourth.
Fourth meeting, because by then they'll have the...
We'll have our zoning code available, pardon me. We'll have our zoning code available, as well as the subset of the Form-based code.
Now, it is also my understanding that this item would come after our regular meeting, but we would have a shortened agenda, and so instead of having a study item, that would be our item, so approximately 8:30.
That's correct. We could have a, excuse me, we could have a recess, if you will, and then reconvene in the lower-level conference room.
So we'll need a resolution with the date, and do we need the time inserted? Mrs. Bartholomew? Because it's a special meeting.
You will need a time, but it can be a definite time, or it could be immediately following the regular meeting.
Okay. Councilwoman Kirwin?
Resolved that joint meeting between the Troy City Council and the Troy Planning Commission would be scheduled on Monday, October 4th, immediately following the regularly-scheduled council meeting to discuss economic development initiatives. Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Kirwin, seconded by Councilwoman McGinnis.
For 2010.
And can you include a place, lower level?
I'm sorry, yes. Include the year and a place, lower level. Thank you, Mrs. Bartholomew.
We're going to meet in the lower level, not in the council boardroom?
Well, with the number of Planning Commissioners and the number of city councils, we thought it'd be more conducive for a table discussion at a larger table.
Okay, that's fine. Lower-level conference room, okay. Discussion of the motion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Can I ask the second of the motion?
It was Councilwoman McGinnis.
Thank you. Councilmember Howarlag?
Yes.
Kirwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltrame?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have our General Obligation Unlimited Tax Refunding Bonds before us, and is there a clarification or information other than what has already been provided to us that council wishes to have to go along with this item? Questions that you have? We need to have a resolution and a second, and then, want to move a resolution somewhere?
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Beltrame?
I'm not going to read the whole page and a half of the resolution, but I would move the resolution as printed to refund the General Obligation Unlimited Tax Bond Series 2003 Public Safety Facilities in City Hall in the aggregate principal amount of $14,500,000 for the purpose of defraying the cost of acquisition and construction of public safety facilities in the city and renovation, reconstruction, et cetera. Therefore, be it finally resolved that, when I get to it.
I think it's at the...
Yeah.
Very end, yes. It's on page 13.
That's what I thought. It was forever. Be it finally resolved, the Troy City Council hereby approves this resolution authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $10 million General Obligation Unlimited Tax Refunding Bonds Series 2010b.
Do we have a second?
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltrame, seconded by Councilwoman Slater, that we approve the resolution as printed and partially read, because the resolution has a lot of information with it. Mr. Surley?
Just for clarification for the public, this is a reauthorization to refinance existing bonds at a lower rate that will save the city taxpayers about $300,000.
Very good. I know each time that we've done the refunding of the bonds, it has saved us money, and that's the purpose of doing this, and we appreciate the fact that we're always looking for the best rate that we can get.
And John or Mr. Benzinski can answer any questions that you may have relative to this matter.
Thank you. I think our questions were answered before, or I've seen one requesting one right now. So we'll take a vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Kirwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltrame?
Yes.
Howarlag?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. We appreciate you being here this evening, both of you. Yes. I know, yes. It's nice to see her here. Thank you. Next, we have our consent agenda items. Is there any item on the consent... Is there any item on the consent agenda that council wishes to have exempted? Hearing none. Could we have a resolution to approve all of them?
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman McGinnis.
Be it hereby resolved that Troy City Council hereby approves all items on the consent agenda as presented.
Moved by Councilwoman McGinnis, seconded by Councilwoman Kirwin, that we approve all of the consent agenda items as stated on the agenda. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew.
Councilmember McGinnis.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mayor Schilling.
Yes.
Councilmember Beltrame.
Yes.
Howarlag.
Yes.
Kirwin.
Yes.
Motion passes. Then we'll move on. I note the memorandums and future council agenda items are listed here. And there's several included here. Did council have questions or comments on any of those items? The K1 or the K2 items? Councilwoman Kirwin.
K2A, I don't see any difficulty in scheduling a study session with Barry Dump of Barry Dump Coaching. I know that we're long overdue to transcend our vision for the city and set some goals. And I'd like to see that scheduled.
And you're speaking of the hour and a half.
The 90 minutes.
Yes. Further comments from council on this? Councilwoman Beltrame.
I don't have a problem, John, scheduling a meeting. I would like it not to be October 4th. Additionally, I question whether we get 90 minutes if we do not meet until 6:00 PM. Granted, our meeting starts at 7:30, but we won't wait until 7:30 to leave the room. So, I'm wondering how inconvenient it would be for those of us with day jobs to meet at 5:30 instead, so that we truly would have an hour and a half with Barry Dump.
We meet at council's pleasure. That's not a problem for staff and myself. I'm sure Mr. Dump wouldn't have a problem with it either. If you wish to proceed in this manner, if I can get a date, we'll advise Mr. Dump and we'll have the meeting at 5:30.
And I know that the suggestion of the time before a regular meeting is suggested, but is he also open to meeting after a regular meeting, a shortened regular meeting?
I'm going to-
Because it might be a problem for some people to be here that early.
I'm going to say yes, although the stated preference was to meet beforehand.
His stated preference? Do you have, does he have dates in, do you have dates in?
We have three dates, well, two dates now, October 11th and October 18th.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Councilwoman McGinnis.
We can meet on the 11th. That would be fine at 5:30, I think.
The 11th? Okay. We set it for the 11th, then? Could we have a resolution on the next agenda, then, Mr. Zerley? Or do you?
We can do that, but if I'm told to call Mr. Dump and schedule a meeting for November or for October 11th, I'll just make it so.
Okay. There's no-
Yes.
No one objecting on council? Okay. Dr. Honrake, put it in the next agenda packet for, to satisfy the machinations of
the city clerks' rules and procedures.
Okay. Well, that's why I asked, because I thought we probably have a resolution in there. Councilwoman Kirwin.
Madam Mayor, the other thing I did, forward some suggested changing, changes to the Code of Ethics, and it was really just to bring it out of the first person on the Troy City Council Code of Ethics, just to make it all uniform without a subjective there. And then I wasn't really applying it to the individual signed paper, but it seems to fit fine. I was wondering on that one whether it would be appropriate or what my colleagues think if we put, as a member of Troy City Council, "I promise to."
I don't actually think that's necessary because they're signing it. I know I have that, because it's being signed. It is going to appear as an agenda item then on our next meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
We're talking about the Code of Ethics.
Yes.
If I'm so advised, I'll put it on next meeting.
Anyone have any objection to the changes that were suggested by Councilwoman Kirwin on the wording? Hearing none. Anyone else have items they wish to bring up under memorandums, future council agenda items? Mr. Zerley? It's not listed here. They could ask under council comments, but since it is under future council agenda items, I'm curious as to when we're going to have our session on boards and committees.
I don't have that scheduled in front of me, but staff is working on that. We're working on, in order of priorities, I think it's restructuring. We're working on the, some concessions and benefit enhancements to get people to retire early if it's cost neutral with the actuaries and then with, meeting with you and the labor unions. If you want to take a two-minute break, I can get an estimate as to when we think we'd be back for boards and committees, but I don't have that information in front of me.
Or you could just send it to us. I'm just inquiring because it was something that was on our plate that we wanted to deal with. And being that we're going to be talking about goals and objectives and things of that nature, I thought, you know, that kind of rolls in with me. That was one of the things that we specifically wanted to work on. So I just asked at this point.
Understood.
You can let us know.
And again, just for clarification on that matter, I look at this assignment as being council-generated as opposed to a management-
Right.
-recommendation like the Code of Conduct.
Yes.
Because management has their own Code of Conduct. But on something like this, all we'll do is give information. We've done that through primarily Tony and I think Laurie helped as well, that was voluminous, to say the least. And we now have staff taking a look to see what the initial purpose and intent was of those meetings, looking at past minutes, just to report, in a nonjudgmental fashion, what's going on with those committees in relation to their charge. But that's about as far as I think we can take it at that point.
Well, I think that was council's intent when we had that, the data and information back to us, that we were going to deal with that matter as a council. So I didn't want to say it.
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Beltrame.
There was another piece of staff analysis that we asked to be made, and that was what of those, excuse me, traditional missions of those committees could be delegated elsewhere. And that is something that I think staff is best equipped to do. So, we would expect that as part of the report as well.
Talking about the committees then that are not authorized by the state or by charter?
Yes.
Essentially? All the other ones?
The ones that we created.
Over the years.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Councilwoman Kirwin.
And I think a review of the notes will show that, because we also talked about outside community organizations that might in fact be addressing some of those same issues or might do it in a better way. So those were the suggestions. And then all we really wanted then after that was to schedule the meeting to take a look at all of that material. So, better to do that sooner. I think that's been hanging out for a while as well.
I had sent a letter to staff. I think I copied council on those instructions that I put to staff. So whatever the elements we had in there is what we're doing.
Right. And I think that was due back at the beginning of August, so that's why I was asking for when we're going to schedule that.
It was due back to the manager's office by the beginning of August.
Right. Okay. If there's none other on that, let's go to council comments. Does anyone have any items they wish to bring up under council comments? Councilwoman Kirwin.
Well, Madam Mayor, I know you had a sign on your lawn, but I want to say that Sunday's Art on the Lake was really wonderful. Remember, that's all volunteers. It's volunteer-driven, open up for the public to come and view arts and enjoy a nice Sunday afternoon. I think they've been at it for almost four decades, and it's always a nice event and a nice opportunity to showcase our scouts as well, who park cars and are very helpful. So, hats off to all of the volunteers who worked so hard to make that such a nice event.
Any other council comments?
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Beltrame.
For those people who are unaware, this is Restaurant Week in Troy, and $15 lunches and $30 dinners. It's a limited menu. And you can go to troyrestaurantweek.com to figure out who's. But the restaurants participating are pretty nice stuff. Benihana Brio, Charlie's Crab Crumpets in the Somerset Inn, Franco's Cafe, Kona Grill, Cruisin' Muron Wilshire, Locino, McCormick &amp; Schmick, Manjin Lau, Morton's, Ocean Prime, Ruth's Chris, The Capital Grill, The Melting Pot, and Tray Monte. For $15 to go have lunch, it's a pretty good deal. Helps local businesses.
Thank you.
I tried one today.
Any other council comments? Next, we have a study item that is the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant. So we'll take a recess and reconvene in the other room in 10 minutes.
I had written a letter dated August 18th, many of whom are in this room, as well as our consultant at Carlisle. They put together a very good program, which I would now like to have opened up by Mark Miller, our assistant manager in charge of services.
Thank you and good evening, members of council. Also, with, I'd just like to note that we do have a number of staff members in the audience, seatplata, representatives, and most of the knowledge related to improvements related to buildings. And feel free to ask questions as we go, because he has a ton of knowledge. We, again, I have also, well, I know Sam Monarado, obviously, is a curator of our fleet. Wade, again, I have also, well, I know Sam Lonarado, obviously he's a part of our fleet. He has a wealth of knowledge and we actually do have some experience with high-grade cars and have had a positive experience. And also, I don't know if you, honestly, Dick Carlisle's here and you have all, know Dick very well, but Zach Brannigan is also here. He's an associate with Carlisle Wardman. Zach worked on this project quite a bit, but what you may not know is Zach also spends Tuesdays in the planning department. Isn't that like Tuesdays with Lori? Tuesdays with Brent.
Please, not for Brett.
But he, Zach really helps out Brett with a lot of day-to-day planning issues related to site plan approval. And he also attends most of the planning commission meetings. He's part of our new planning department, which is high-grade, a consultant who's embedded in the department for at least part of the time. As John Zerlai noted, that we did receive an award of nine hundred and twenty-one thousand, one hundred dollars. The grant period is a three-year period from two thousand nine to two thousand twelve. And it was all part of the American Recovery Reinvestment Act. And I will say that there was a lot of different programs that came out of here. And not just in this energy moment, but many, many, many different facets of dollars set aside by the federal government. And that also created some problems and issues. Nothing major, but some nuances because it all just came down so quick. The money was there in the contracts with it before a lot of the infrastructure for reporting and delivering those services from the federal to the local and the interface back and forth. The overall objectives of this process is to reduce fossil fuel emissions, reduce the total energy use of local communities, to improve the energy efficiency in transportation, building, and other sectors. Also to create and retain jobs. Ultimately, this is moving towards to try to create energy independence and leadership on climate change. Obviously, this is a presidential priority and this program is supporting that priority with a lot of dollars. I'm sorry. Now, in this discussion that we talked today, it's important to note that all of the projects are completely funded by the E E C P G program. There are no, no matching fund requirements at this time. Now, I talked a little bit about the nuances of the project of interfacing with the federal government. Initially, we came forth and had to quarterly reporting on FederalReporting.com. And we started doing that. And then, lo and behold, the Department of Energy, because that's where this money comes from, who had never administered grant programs ever. They then developed their own reporting system called PAGE. Well, in the meantime, Zach had prepared for us with our assistance PDFs to support our application. Well, we provided these great descriptions of our project, but PAGE had a little nuance. They had a limitation, how many words that you could provide. So they wouldn't upload and authorize our, 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 our strategy. But eventually they took care of it. I don't know how they took care of it, but eventually they did. But what was the limit of number of words?
It was literally about, like you could have about two hundred words. Whereas our document was only maybe, you know, fifteen hundred words. But you need a couple pages to describe these things.
So we spent a little amount of time just saying, you know, interfacing with the sides about that. Obviously, these are quarterly reports and we do that now. Get used to this clicker. I apologize. So the E E C P G program is broken up into a few different sections. And I'm going to summarize what those are. The first, first component of the project was our conservation strategy. And basically, this was the application and the budget supplemental. And in this, we, we utilized Carlisle Wardman Associates for a total of fifteen thousand dollars. But with that, they provided us technical assistance and they're still doing that now. And also, they prepared the Rapid Energy Assessment Program, which later in this presentation Zach is going to present to you and talk a little bit about. Wind energy. We, this is one of our projects. We're closing two wind spires and there's an example of it. We're stressing to use the Michigan Company. We initially in our activity sheet said that we were going to put it on the city campus, but we're, we're in the process of looking at where the best feasible location will be to get the most amount of wind. So we hadn't decided exactly where. And I know that Steve Plata has done some research considering, will it be feasible to build the infrastructure and wire this to sell back energy to DTE? And we've determined that they really don't produce enough electricity to make it feasible to sell back to DTE. But that's what we're moving on, on wind energy. And the estimated cost is twenty-four thousand dollars. We have a pretty extensive project, almost three hundred thousand dollars for LED lighting projects. And it will include improvements in City Hall, Police Department, Library, next year, the courthouse, the fire police training center, the city campus parking lot, roadway, and anything. Now, this is where if you have any questions, this is where Steve can answer anything about LED lighting because he, and I can show you, Steve, on this next slide, Steve has had experimented or had trial opportunities to use LED lighting throughout our campus. And here are some of the locations that he has done that. And the one thing that we have found with Zach also is that it's very important to spec high-quality LED equipment because there are some things out there that will not last very long and you'll be wasting your money if you don't have good specifications. So we're working on these specs right now to put that out to do this fairly large construction project. And once again, feel free to ask questions. I kind of liked it during the podcast.
I got a question for Steve.
All right.
Steve, how long does an LED light last compared to our standard lighting?
Well, the annual lighting is roughly about seven to twelve years. That's a twenty-four-hour operation. So basically, you're probably going to see at least almost twenty years life expectancy out of an LED fixture because obviously not lighting everything twenty-four-seven. LEDs will hold their, their brightness over seventy percent of their longevity of their life. So at the end of their life cycle, they don't actually burn themselves out. They just become thirty percent less efficient.
Steve, can you tell us the interesting things some communities have found when they use LED lighting with traffic lights?
Well, there's been some studies out there where traffic lights, snow develops on traffic lights, so they're starting to put heaters in to dissipate the snow. Because regular street lighting or traffic lighting, the lamps will get hot, so they melt their own snow. So now they're finding in communities that have had issues with this where the snow isn't actually melting.
I think Sam, you found, sorry, but Sam, you found that automobile companies are starting to put LED lights on cars and, yes, it's the same thing with automobiles. The rear taillights of an automobile, when you put it on the road, it creates some point of a vacuum and the snow will accumulate on LED rear taillights. So there's a little bit of an issue there and they're having to put heating elements or coils in the lights to warm them up. So all the energy efficiency you gain on LED, you're spending on the heating cores.
I really wanted to go back to wind energy. It doesn't really have to go as, is it Steve Plata? Or who would like to answer the wind energy?
Well, I'll try to answer.
Well, you said, of course, this wouldn't be to sell back, but it would be to use at one of our facilities. Now, the background information that we received, the Carlisle Wardman document, did declare that it would be on the, on the main municipal structure. And then there was a suggestion now to change it. Would somebody like to explore that a little bit so we have a better understanding of what the plan is now?
Well, I'll start. We, we found out that these really can only produce about four hundred watts of light. So in other words, four, one hundred watt light bulb. It's not really a lot of energy. And part of what we're looking to do is try to find a location that has the most amount of wind because it would be a shame to have these spires where they're not spinning when we have another location that, that does that, that is much more windy. And, and our initial indications are locations such as the northwest corner of the city where it's higher up, it has a lot more wind than the southeast looking, it's lower. So we're in the process of looking at what would be the best location from a wind standpoint.
That makes sense. However, it would feed right into one of our buildings so that something would benefit from it, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, these, these systems are smaller, like I said, and they, yeah, they're physically smaller. And then their actual output is smaller, but the investment is much smaller. You know, they're relatively affordable to install. The idea is ultimately that they would be able to take a very small facility and potentially remove its energy obligation off the grid completely by supplying energy directly to it. And like Mark said, they don't put out a lot of juice right at any one given time. But the idea is ultimately that over the span of their entire life, they'll be a nice, you know, consistent source of a reliable, you know, but, but small level of energy. So one of these, or two of these, you know, might potentially power a small, single-family home without really intense energy use. So that'll kind of give you a rough idea of how powerful they can be. And of course, they operate on a, they work best at nine miles per hour average wind speed and above. That's what they're designed for. But the benefit of this small system is that it can accept wind from any direction. Most of the vertical access turbines that you see, well, this is a vertical access turbine. A horizontal access is like a windmill. Those are, you know, they have to be pointed in one direction or another. These ones are nice because they can very quickly adapt.
What, excuse me, close proximity to a, is it city building or the AMB? Excuse me. We're looking for city application.
They can be as far away as you want, but the closer they are, the less expensive they are to install. That's, that's what I was trying to say.
Infrastructure would be nice.
Would you, with the wiring, lose, lose power with a lot of longer wiring units?
You would just upgrade the wiring size. If anybody has been out to Metro Airport, there are three of them sitting here. Right in the, as soon as you enter the airport, they're speeding away, right in the medium.
That was decorative.
There's one at the Ann Arbor High School. Is it Miller Road access?
Mark, how tall is that structure?
Zach, do you know? They go up to thirty feet tall. They're very tall.
So they ultimately are residential scale?
They have types of models which you can put on apartments.
Yep.
You know, that, that if you, you know, in an urban setting, you can model one on the roof or add a report to help use your residence.
Yeah, one of the, one of the great benefits of using this application in the city of Troy is that even though they don't have a huge output, because they're affordable, they're a good demonstration. And ultimately, over time, we hope to track their energy production. And then we can make, you know, really informed decisions over payback when we're spending our own money, you know, in the future. If they do have a big payback, then it might be something we'd invest in. But there's something that ultimately will be affordable. And they are, even though the company itself, the financials of the company are based out of state, these are manufactured in the upper peninsula. So that's another good economic development benefit for Michigan.
Okay, the, the next project or activity is energy audit for a high-priority building. And the standard we set, we chose buildings which use at least one percent of the city's energy consumption. But what is really important to know is that the community center is exempted from being able to spend E E C P G dollars on because there's an indoor pool. So, and that building probably consumes the most amount of energy of any building we own. So unfortunately, we, we can't do that at this time. So we're, we're actually, right now, we have scheduled the interviews with two firms in this week and next week for, to do this, to do the energy audit at City Hall, Public Works Garage, all the fire stations, nature center, library, and the fire police training center. We're estimating the cost to be about forty-two thousand dollars. And what this will do is, is it will give us a description or roadmap on how, what we should do to save money related to energy. Each, what we're finding out, we're looking at the, the stability qualifications. Each firm has a little different style going about doing this. So when we have the interviews, we'll, we'll select a firm and obviously we'll have to come back to council to approve the contract. But then what we'll do is take this energy audit and we have a, a, we will have things that we need to improve, but Steve has one project that's near and dear to his heart that we don't even need an eye for, is that in City Hall, we have nineteen sixty-five boiler. And we know that we, we need to replace that. Steve, what are the specs? What's the efficiency on that now?
Well, the, the efficiency on the boiler that we have present is roughly about fifty-eight percent. We're looking at putting an eighty-seven percent efficient boiler, which will result in about a seventy-eight hundred dollars savings annually just for the old City Hall building. So that is a substantial amount of money put back in our own pockets. We'll have the capability of reducing load and shedding load capability. So let's say, to put it in Landman's terms, if you have a gas pedal in your car and you just push down your gas, you could give it more gas or less gas depending on how much effort you push forward with it. The boiler that we have now is either fully operational or no operation at all, so. We're moving in the right direction anyhow.
So, but also as part of our, our application, we have a reserve of two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars so that when we get the energy audit back, we can hire a consultant if necessary to prepare specifications for the improvements, whatever they may be. There's a whole variety of things that could come up. And we can, we can fund those improvements from this reserve. The next, this next activity is high-efficiency vehicles. And what we did is we included a budget of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars to fund the incremental difference between a conventional car and either a, an alternative energy or high-grade vehicle. We had proposed thirty vehicles. However, what we're going to have to do now, which has kind of changed since we first submitted this application, we're going to have to really assess whether we need thirty vehicles in this time span because, as you know, our, our staffing, you know, they're reducing it. And Mr. Lonarado is looking at selling cars off, not buying them. So we're going to have to do that. But, but that's all right. And we can do one of two things. We, we can reassign the money to other approved activities.